Ready? I should probably do more, but I don't. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the -- good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for June 5th. Because we were off last week, we're going to brief tonight's agenda for the legislative session and then go to June 12th. And so, Mr. Perkins, I'll let you start with tonight's agenda.
Call the roll.
After the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. Thank you, Council President Beggs, Johnny Perkins, City Administrator. This is the advanced briefing for this evening's council session, Monday, June 5. Starting with our consent agenda, number one is a low bid for Garland Avenue Parkway Shaw Middle School. Our presenter briefly to present this is Dan Buller.
For June 5th?
June 5th.
Oh. I thought we started with the advance.
No, because it's a double tonight.
Okay.
We are requesting to pull that completely off the agenda. DOT has required us to reject all bids on account of inadequate DB paperwork, so we have to rebid the project.
So you're looking for a motion to table indefinitely?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. What is the paperwork that wasn't submitted?
DB disadvantaged business enterprise, and the paperwork is super specific. You make one error and they'll toss you.
Okay.
And all three bidders made different errors, but they tossed them all.
All those in favor of table indefinitely indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Any abstentions? All right, that's tabled.
Thank you, Mr. Buller. Item two, council president service level agreement, I believe that has been deferred to June 12th.
Yes, but just while we're on that, any updates from the county on that?
We do have one from our city attorney, Mr. Smithson.
Do we want to address it now?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for having me down, council. Yes, I spoke with a commissioner today, and they have made a proposition. Nobody has actually put it on council, I'm sorry, the county commissioner's agenda, but their proposal is that the city be allowed to have somebody on the finance committee. They are not interested in changing the board makeup at this time. We had some discussions that they would change the board and give us a position on the board that was non-voting. This is, I don't know if you could call it a, I don't know, this is their proposal. It's from one of the commissioners. I can discuss it further with them if you have any.
It doesn't meet our statute, our ordinance, that's the problem. So it doesn't, doesn't. But it's good to get an update that they're talking to you, so.
I guess I'm wondering, what's the benefit? Would they have any kind of input on the finance committee? Or would they just be there as an observer, but no observational role on the board?
Well, I think they would have the ability to interact and make suggestions in the financing and the budget process.
But they wouldn't have a seat, observational seat at the board?
They would not. They would not. And I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know where the county commissioners are, if there's an appetite to change the board. I'm not sure that there is, well, I'm just not sure where they're at as far as that goes. But I can continue the conversation.
The meetings are public, correct?
Yes.
And so really, this is an issue of maybe exec sessions, not wanting somebody from the city in the exec sessions?
I believe that's one of the issues.
Not just someone from the city, not someone from council.
Right.
Because other people from the city are exec session. But they can't talk to us. They couldn't, you can't update us if you go to exec session.
Well, I don't do well with secrecy, so.
I'm with you.
Can I clarify?
Yeah.
Thank you, council president. So the fire chief and myself, city administrator, are currently on the Shrek board. We just attended our first meeting last month, and it does afford us all the rights and privileges of executive session and other information that Shrek is sharing. I think what the city attorney is suggesting, they would like to offer a finance committee seat. Did they discuss all as it relates to having a position on the board, but that as a non-voting member, as a, I don't know when to use the word observer, maybe that's incorrect, but some type of position that isn't a voting member and is precluded from executive session? Is that something that's being discussed or was ever discussed?
I can't speak to that. I can just say that I spoke with one of the county commissioners today and got this information. I can further the conversation, just, and see if we can get further along. But we had that much of an update, so I wanted to bring it to council's attention.
No, totally appreciate that. And you're not mentioning the commissioner's name, but if you could mention it to me later, that'd be helpful.
Sure, absolutely.
I could give you. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smithson. Item three on the consent agenda for June 5 is the purchase of a John Deere wheel loader for the Water Department. Our presenter is Mr. Rick Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, council. Water Department would like to purchase a John Deere 624P wheel loader from Pepe Machinery using a source well contract. Total amount would be $317,393.98. This is going to replace an older unit that Water has, which will go down to Streets Department, and Streets will dispose of a different unit. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Item four, Public Works Agreement with Johnsons Controls Fire Protection for the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility. Our presenter is Rayland Janette.
Afternoon, council. Yes, this is a contract with Johnson Controls for fire protection in the IT room down at Ripworth, which will provide some upgrades and some looping of the new rack they're putting in there. And it's for $149,433.46. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is a contract with MHA Speak Out, Speak Up for the Youth Homeless Demonstration Project. Presenter is the Director of Community Housing Human Services, Jen Saracides.
Hi, good afternoon. We're requesting to approve distribution of $138,000 to MHA Speak Out, Speak Up to administer the Host Homes project, which will be part of our YHGP portfolio. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six is a, item six is.
We're just seeing if Councilmember Strat need a second sponsor on that contract with H, MHA. If so, I'm willing to do that. I just want clarity on it.
I'll make note of it.
Item six, Contract Amendment with GHD to Develop Future Infrastructure Designs and Costs Associated with Providing Assistance to the Wastewater System. Our presenter is Marsha Davis.
Good afternoon. The contract we have right now with GHD is to do long-term planning, to do a strategy for the city's water system. This amendment will add the wastewater and stormwater system, so we can have a 20-year look at the future for both wastewater and stormwater with, the goal is to create a sustainable, resilient, and affordable future that's endorsed by key stakeholders. And the amount of, this contract amendment is $939,503. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Item seven is a revenue contract with Fat Beam to prevent Fat Beam to use interduct in the city's conduits for 10-year term. Council President, we would like to ask a staff if we could please defer and hold that over for council consideration on Monday, June 26.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred, and we have meeting scheduled to continue to talk about this. I appreciate the administration working with us on this.
Thank you, council president. Item eight, Report of the Mayor Pending, 8A, Claims and Payments of Previously Approved Obligations, including those of Parks and Libraries for May 19. Item 8B, Claims and Payments of Previously Approved Obligations, including those of Parks and Libraries through May 26. Item 8C, Payroll Claims of Previously Approved Obligations through May 27, 2023. And item nine, City Council Meeting Minutes, May 25, 22, 15, and June 1. All of those will be considered during this evening's council session. That brings us to item 10, Amendment to a Loan Agreement with the State of Washington Department of Ecology Regarding the Biennial Stormwater Capacity Grants. And our presenter is Mr. Mark Pappich.
Good afternoon, council. This item is an amendment to our existing capacity grant. The amount right now is $70,000. This adds $62,500 to that. This is 100% grant money, no match. Also gives us a little bit of an extension on our time, but only until the end of this month, so we're asking for a kind of a truncated suspension of the rules to get this approved so that we can spend the money. Any questions?
Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow this to be added to tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Bingle.
For this one item?
This one item.
Thank you.
All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
For one item?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no. Any abstentions? All right, the rules are suspended. Is there a motion to add OPR 2022-0413 to tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no.
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, that's added.
All right, that concludes the consent agenda for this evening's council session. Now moving on to resolutions. Resolution adding two items to the Planning Commission's 2022-2023 Work Program. Our presenter is our Director of Planning, Mr. Spencer Gardner.
Hello, council members. I think I briefed this already, so hopefully no surprises here. This is just adding two items, the addition of consideration for fish hatcheries in our shoreline master plan, and then also the addition of GFCs to Plan Commission as they're working their way through that process. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Moving on to first reading ordinances, this is executing a renewed ordinance establishing interim zoning regulations concerning the construction of low-intensity residential buildings. Our presenter is Mr. Kevin Freebot.
Good afternoon, council president, members of the council. This is the same ordinance that I presented to you at economic, or at Urban Experience, I believe. This would simply extend the building opportunity and choices for all interim ordinance through December 18th, so that we can complete the efforts to build a permanent replacement for that program. And Councilmember Cathcart, you'd asked about BOKA permits up to date and how many. We have about 21, 22 that have been, that are in process. Another 24 units, residential units, have been permitted, but we've had more than 350 pre-application meetings, so there's very high interest. There's a lot of data that we're going through to understand BOKA's implementation.
Awesome. There was one concern I heard from a neighborhood. We had taken out some language of character of the neighborhood and inserted livability, and I'm just.
I believe you're referring to the replacement building opportunity for housing, the comp plan amendment.
Yeah.
The wording of the values has changed, but that's not part of this ordinance. So that's, I'm happy to chat about that later if you want.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freebot. First reading ordinance, submitting a ballot proposition to the voters, amending the city council redistricting process. Councilmember Cathcart, I have that under your name, sir.
Yeah, and I'm going to make a motion to defer final reading to June 26.
Second. Discussion? I wanted to express my appreciation for bringing that motion. It's an important thing. I think most council members want to do something, but we've been working on other things, but we haven't really had a chance to really fine-tune it. So, thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no.
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred to the June 26.
All right, and our final first reading ordinance relates to the building code and expiration of building permits, and our presenter this afternoon is Mr. Dean Giles.
Good afternoon, council members. This is simply a proposal to extend the building expiration time from the current one year to two years to reduce the number of building permit extension requests, lessening the hassle of the applicants and the amount of time that staff spends. We've already briefed on this previously. I'm here to answer any questions. No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under special considerations, Council Letter in Support of Grant Application by the Municipal Court to the Administrative Office of the Courts. Council President Beggs, I have this under.
Yeah, this is a request from the municipal court. There's a large pot of money available from the administrative office of the courts to support therapeutic problem-solving courts, like the new drug court we're hoping to set up for municipal court, and they just need a letter of support. So there's a letter in the packet, and we'll just vote on that. Anyone who votes yes will add their signature and give it over to the municipal court to use in their grant application.
All right, thank you. And our final item on the advanced agenda for this evening, Monday, June 5, is under hearings relating to the minimum parking spaces and bicycle parking, and our presenter is Tyler Kimbrel. And I believe Mr. Gardner is going to step in and make this brief presentation.
Yeah, I think Tyler reached out and asked if there was a need, and there was no need for a presentation, so unless there are any questions, we'll just, he's briefed this a few times.
I just had a comment to my fellow council members in the public, but I just went to Boise last weekend, and Boise is beating us on bicycle and bike parking and pedestrian-only street, and it was way cool, and I don't think we can let Boise be cooler than Spokane. So I just want to let us all know that.
I sent him back, and I thought he was asking if he needed, wanted to do a presentation tonight at the hearing, but we don't need him to do that either. But I thought he said he was going to be here tonight, but maybe he was just talking about.
He will be here.
Okay, so I thought maybe a short presentation tonight for the public, just because they might.
Oh, so you would like him to present tonight? Because he's planning to be here.
If he's going to be here, yeah. Just less than five minutes, I said.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you.
That concludes the items for Monday, June 5.
Is there a motion to adopt tonight's legislative agenda?
Excuse me. Oh, there was going to be an ordinance added to this agenda for first reading that relates to the regulation of illegal activities that Councilmember Kinnear was going to sponsor.
I believe Councilmember Kinnear is withdrawing that request, but there is a note to suspend the rules and add the special consideration for tonight.
Oh, we didn't add that? Okay. So the rules, see, now you're going to make me do that motion again, Councilmember Bingle.
I'm going to make you do it for everyone.
There a motion to suspend the rules for adding a special consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no. Any abstentions? All right, the rules are suspended for purposes of adding a special consideration. Is there a motion to add S1?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no.
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, thanks. Now, is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right, tonight's agenda is adopted, and now we're on to the advanced agenda for June 12th.
Thank you, council president. This is the advanced agenda for Monday, June 12. Starting with consent agenda item number one, we've already heard from the city attorney on the status of the service level agreement with Shrek, so we, no need to go any further there. Item number two on the consent agenda is a purchase from Contract Design Associates for the Community and Economic Development Department Division. Our presenter is Tammy Pomquist.
Good afternoon. So this is a total of four contracts to purchase furniture within the Economic Development Division. It would include the, finishing the furniture purchase for the DSC. We've phased that over three years. It will also include purchasing furniture for code enforcement, historic preservation, and the division director, and then purchasing the remainder of the furniture for long-range planning and moving long-range planning down to the third floor, so that our entire division is in one floor. These are all budgeted for in our budget.
Thank you, Ms. Pomquist.
Thank you.
Item three, Value Blanket with Hitachi Inova USA for the purchase of feeder and grate parts for the waste-to-energy facility. And item four, a contract with United States Electric Corporation for electrical maintenance and technical support at the waste-to-energy facility. Our presenter on items three and four is Mr. David Payne.
Good afternoon, council president, council members. The first is a renewal of value blanket with Hitachi Zosen for gram, grate, crate, boy, I got marbles in my mouth. Ram feeder and grate parts for our boiler. The ram feeder pushes the trash onto the grates, and the grates move the trash down through the boiler while it's processed. The contract runs from July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024, for a value of $1 million and $1,200,000 plus tax. The second is a renewal, three of four, with U.S. Electric Corporation of Olympia, Washington for high-voltage electrical maintenance and support. This contract runs from May 1st, 2023, to August 30, or April 30th, 2024, for a cost not to exceed $275,000 plus tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Item five, Preventive Maintenance Agreement with Arrow Concrete and Asphalt for Off-Street Parking Lot Repair and Maintenance of the Nelson Services Center and the Fire Training Center. Our presenter from Facilities is Mr. Dave Steele.
Good afternoon, council president, council members. So every year, Facilities has been budgeted for about $200,000 for about the last five or six years to go through our various parking lots, all of the city-owned parking lots that we've got, parks, fire department, libraries, and do preventative maintenance on those crack ceiling, grinding, cutting out potholes, those kind of things, doing overlays, restriping. This summer, we're specifically focused on a couple of larger lots, that would be for fire training, and then at the Nelson Service Center. So there's a few additional dollars in this annual contract. Rather than 200, it's 245. Fleet and solid waste have both contributed a little bit, and then we're bringing most of our dollars to bear on the Fire Training Center, because that was one of our commitments, is working through all of those smaller lots. We finally get to one that's, it's large and it needs a significant amount of work. So that's this contract, and those will be the ones you'll see out there this summer that'll be getting done. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Next on the advanced agenda for Monday, June 12, item six, Contract Renewal with Control Solutions Northwest for Preventive Maintenance for the Dispatch Center facilities. Item seven, a contract amendment with Environmental Control Spokane for additional fire department facilities as it relates to janitorial services. And item eight, a public works agreement with Pro Mechanical Services for HVAC replacement of the fire department facility at 1610 North Rebecca Street. Our presenter is Mr. Chief, or Chief David Stockton. Chief?
Thank you. Good afternoon, council president, council. Yeah, the next three items. The first one is a contract renewal, a first of two with Control Solutions. This is for repair and maintenance of HVAC systems out at dispatch, training, the shop, $90,000 annually. The second one is a contract amendsment with Environment Control that provides our janitorial services. We're moving into Sunnu Offices at 1610 North Rebecca, which is the MSO and CARES office, so we're adding $10,140 annually to do the janitorial work at that facility. And then finally, is a public works agreement with Pro Mechanical Services to upgrade the HVAC equipment at that same facility at 1610 North Rebecca. That's $98,023.70, including tax. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I should remember this. If I don't, I apologize. On these costs, are these split with the other municipalities that are part of the combined communication?
Yes, eventually that'll be worked out. We're in the process of doing an inter-local, I believe, or an MOU, and we're working that out.
So we pay, and then there's, we get the reimbursement back?
Yes, that's the master plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Beg your chief, nice to see you.
Thanks.
Items nine and 10. Item nine is a low bid to be determined at bid opening. I believe that's going to be held today for the Driscoll Alberta Cochrane Sidewalk. And item 10, a low bid for the business area grind and overlay. Our presenter, Mr. Dan Buller.
Good afternoon. Item nine, Driscoll Alberta Cochrane Sidewalk, which constructs a sidewalk along these streets in the vicinity of Finch Elementary. It's a blank agenda item. As you can see, we just opened bids at 115. Bids and qualifications will be reviewed today and tomorrow, and a final recommendation to award forward to you for next week's current agenda. to award forward to Chief for next week's current agenda. Apparently, low bidder is Cameron Riley of Spokane, a firm that has worked on city projects frequently. Two bids were received pending the final review. The low bid appears to be about $198,000 or 11% above the engineer's estimate. Work's expected to start late this summer and be completed by this fall. Item 10 is proposed low-bid contract for the business area grind and overlay, which does grind and overlay is in a number of business areas around town on non-art materials. Again, a blank agenda item, just open bids. Reviewing them now, the apparent low bidder is Shamrock Paving, another firm that does work frequently. Three bids were received. Low bid appears to be 241,000 or 8% below the engineer's estimate, and then of no particular relevance at all, the amount separating bids two and three was 99 cents. Never seen that. One was $2,999,999.99, and the other one just dropped the 99 cents, but it didn't matter because they were numbers two and three.
Thank you, Mr. Buller.
It's the little things.
Item 11, public works maintenance agreement with ABM Industry Group for the Intermodal Facility Janitorial Services. Our presenter is Ernest Wickard. And I do not see him here at this time. Item 12 is reported, the mayor pending claims of payments of previously approved obligation, including those of parks and libraries. That information will be completed for the council's consideration on Monday, June 12, as will the city council meeting minutes, which is item number 13. Moving to the special budget ordinances. This action arises from the need to increase funding and support for the Threat Resources and Assistance Center. Our presenter is the Director of Neighborhood Housing and Human Services, Kim McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Council President, council members, thank you for the time today. I'm here just to request the approval of a three, to authorize the use of 3.9 million that comes out of REIT 1 to support the increase of the operating costs for the track shelter. I received an email earlier that there may be some other discussion, so if you'd like me to stop at that at this moment, or I'll answer questions?
We're gonna probably amend it to 4.7 million, but you can still talk about what it's going to be used for.
Okay, so this will be used because the increase in the, some of the shelter beds from the first time we created the amendment for the first contract with some of the Camp Hope folks coming into track, as well as those from Cannon, their operating costs have gone up specifically. So this will take us through the 3.9, hopefully with the help with the Department of Commerce's funding that hopefully will come through as well, will take us through the end of December, fingers crossed. So, do you have any questions?
Kim, what's the average census at track been running?
They've been running really still very high. They vary from 27 beds available to 19 beds available. One night, they had only 10 beds available, which is really different than what we thought would happen during this time period. When we first were looking at the budgets way back when I first joined, we figured that the months of like, you know, like March, April, May, June, we would see some specifically down, you know, going back to maybe 150 beds, although that seemed like that wasn't going to be. We really thought we'd be hitting 250, you know, by the time the winter, sorry, the weather got warmer, but that's not been the case at all. I keep pretty close track on it, and I don't think we've hit, I don't think they've hit 300 beds in quite a while. So I could be wrong on that, but they've been staying pretty steady. Unfortunately, I didn't look today, so sorry about that, but yes, they've been staying.
You told us how many beds were available, but what's?
Oh, sorry. So, you know, and let's say between, somewhere between 300 beds to roughly 340 have been, their averaging has been about 321, I would think, roughly. So that's, you know, they've been staying very, very, and that's three meals a day and all of that as well.
But that includes the people from Cannon Street?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
On that, do we know, have most of the folks from Cannon gone to track and stayed there? Has there been some who've?
That I will have to get back to. I know 69 ended up going and had been staying. I haven't asked that question recently, but I'll be glad to make a note of that and get back to you on the census in regards to that. There were 80 to 100 that had come in from Camp Hope over time. Some of those are still there, some of those are still not, but I can, I'll get a, you know, another census on that as well, because it's been a little while since I've asked that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Councilmember Canaire has a question.
I do, thanks. Kim, is there contingency for smoke events? So if we have, you know, the dome of smoke that we had in years past for extended period of time, the numbers at that shelter are going to grow, so there's no plan really to do? So where do we get the money to increase perhaps to 100 for people who need shelter from smoke?
Thank you, Councilmember Canaire, for that question. We've been, Jen, Sarah Cides, and Sarah Nuss, and I, along with Brian Cottington, Brian Walker, have been talking about what in not only the cooling side of things, but also the safe air situations once smoke arises, using track as part of that system. We're looking into air filtration systems as well as different ways to mitigate some of the extra beds that that's going to be. That is going to be an issue because as tight as they're already at, having that more than 350 beds is, of course, going to raise the cost, not only in the bed night, but also the meals and the other items that are there. The other issue is that is also, they're worried about, the Salvation Army is concerned about the 1 to 25, that's what their ratio is for staff. So there, we've had a conversation with them, and they're going to try to work out a plan as well to see, just in case that, as that comes in, how will they make that work as far as staffing goes? So we have had discussions, and I think there'll be more discussions as Jen and Sarah and I and Brian Cottington work out some of those details, trying to find also different ways of, like, providing different fans. There's an issue at the Salvation Army, if you close down those rolling doors, that the humidity could get strong with the swamp coolers in there. So we'll be looking at different things that we could try to do through donations that, as well as, you know, water and everything along those lines. So we'll keep everyone updated too on that. We have started that, we have started that plan as well.
But on that same note, not only with the smoke and the heat, but revisit our plan with the libraries to provide those spaces as well.
Yes, the libraries will be, we've been working with Andrew, I'm sorry, Case, Chance, sorry, Andrew, in regards to extended hours on that as well and the weekends, yes.
Also, have we circled back with the schools to talk about potentially using gymnasiums and things like that?
I have not, so I will, I will take a look at that as well. I know you'd mentioned that, I'm sorry.
I think Councilmember Bingle had brought it up last year, but I'm just not sure if it ever went anywhere.
Okay, we can, we can check in on the schools as well. One thing that there is a, there's been a little bit of a movement as well that we've been talking about in regards to the donations of fans, so that, because a lot of seniors do not, do not want to leave their house. So how can we find ways of providing, you know, air conditioning along this, at least in fans? So that is one of the discussions as well.
I will just mention, in 2021, the school district was willing to open up schools in that really bad heat dome, but we need to be, find who there and be in contact with them.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Appreciate your time. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Just, Mr. Burr, did we, we circulated that 4.7? So is there a motion to substitute the 4.7 million special budget ordinance?
So moved substitution.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? I caught one no. All right, so that suspend, excuse me, substituted. All right, continue on.
Moving to emergency ordinances. The first one is relating to parks, amending various sections of the municipal code concerning park rules and regulations. And I actually have three presenters on this topic. City Attorney Linda Smithson, Director of Parks and Recreation Garrett Jones, and Captain Tom Hendren from the Spokane Police Department. Gentlemen.
Council President, can I say something before they start?
Of course.
This has gotten a little confusing because we've had all these ordinances bouncing around, so I just want to let everybody know, this is the ordinance that myself, Councilmember Cathcart, Councilmember Bingle have been meeting with parks and the police department as a result of what we're hearing in our neighborhoods about their frustration and fear of what's going on in the, in the parks. They're going to spend some time briefing it, and I will say at the end, I think Garrett's going to bring up a possible compromise that we may have come up with, with Council President, Council President on his ordinance. So don't get frustrated if it's confusing, we can talk through it.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Stratton, Council President, the rest of council. I do want to thank this entire group. It's been a very good, robust communication between a lot of different departments across the board, but I think the one goal that everyone has in common is to create the best safe public spaces we can for our community. And I would say too, like Councilmember Stratton mentioned, every time that we go to a neighborhood council as representing Parks and Recreation, the number one concern or question to us is park safety. This ordinance was briefed at the previous Public Safety Committee meeting. Went through some of the dollar amounts, what the type of impacts we're seeing in parks. Just to highlight again, when we're looking at the after-hours of what type of activity we're seeing, it's a wide range from assaults to drug and alcohol use, including by minors, dumping illegal fires, and of course vandalism. We were concerned as, as park staff during what we call the off-season or slow season within our parks between November of last year and April of this year, a significant increase in vandalism of roughly around $163,000. Captain Hendren has been a great partner as well. He has a lot of the data as far as the crime that we've been seeing in a number of our parks after hours, that those, those data points were provided at the last committee meeting, but we can highlight those if there's any additional questions. The other two is just some of the outcomes, and then when we talk about the level of service impact, it's not only the crime that happens during the night, but it's the level of service impacts of the positive use that we see in our parks during the day. And, and a part of that too is whether it's perception of reality of our citizens feeling unsafe in a number of our parks, whether they're seeing broken facilities, costly repairs. So those, these dollars, we don't, we don't have a magical bucket that our vandalism and broken facilities come from. It takes away from something else within our facilities. The environmental destruction, a lot of what we see around the banks of the Lata Creek, the Spokane River, we're seeing that impact. A lot of that is happening in the West Hills neighborhood, and we're working with that neighborhood too on potential solutions. And then again, the worst thing is that picture on the left is just, public spaces are just out of commission, whether a family wants to come enjoy a park and they come to the facility and the slide is out of commission, or the splash pad is not working, and, and you see those, those grins turn upside down into frowns, and, and that is the biggest impact for us is that level of service for our park users. When we talk about outreach, I wanted to include this. This is an important piece. This happened over a year ago, but this is something too, when we had our award-winning outreach plan for our master plan, that these key areas of the community were telling us that, that, you know, 11% at the time were, felt unsafe, have prevented them from using some of our park facilities. And I won't go into the detail, but you can see those percentages in each one of those districts. 22% of our survey respondents reported having an unpleasant experience of those, were illegal camping, drug use, vandalism, crime, or harassment. And also, before they said anything, before we started doing bigger investments, 17% said we need to address many ways of how we can improve the safe, the quality and how safe our parks are to our citizens. Again, this is a combination, a multi-pronged approach between capital investment, outreach, ownership, but then also that public safety component. So with that, with the partnership, Mary Mary Matsu is not here today, but I want to thank her for her support too, and Captain Hendren, SPD, and the council members of bringing back the misdemeanor violation option of, in parks after hours. This was endorsed by the Park Board last October, and again, this was something that was on the books before 2018. We believe, City Legal believes it was just an oversight at the time, so we want to see what type of impact this has moving forward. And another piece too is the outreach. Again, if this is approved, what can we do again to educate our park users? And so this is just a snapshot of our current park, park rule signs that we have out in our park facilities today, but some of that too is just onsite education, whether that's through park staff, SPD, our park ranger program, also informational signage, and then also sharing with the networks. Our biggest ability is we have a huge network of contacts through our neighborhood councils and our user groups to be able to share the changes in the park rules, and then also with, of course, what we do and our wonderful team in marketing communications around earned media, social media, to get the word out to say this is now enforced, this has changed, and here are ways to do it. Again, I think our goal is not to arrest more people, it is, do we see a change in the impact from the increase in vandalism and crime that we see to seeing that decrease moving forward? So that is just a quick overview. I know there was a compromise on the table to look at this as a pilot program. I know in Parks and Recreation, we're, we're big on pilot programs. I know there was a suggestion of a six-month pilot program on this. I would just counter back to just potentially look at one year. And, and the reason is because that gives us a good breadth of window of the potential impact because of the seasonality that we have in Parks and Recreation, of the summertime use, fall, winter, and spring. Being able to see the data, what SPD is doing, what we're seeing from a Parks and Recreation standpoint, I think a year would be a great window of time to see those impacts or the lack of impacts that we're seeing in our parks and open spaces. And so again, I think that would just, in conversations with Councilmember Stratton, if there was that compromise, I would just counter to see if we could look at the one-year option.
The other thing I was thinking about is we could still do an update at six months, so we would have the two updates with, with the data that you're collecting, so we could do it at six months and then at the, the end of the second six months.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree on the year. I mean, I think if you want to just kind of do an apples-to-apples, kind of look back, it makes more sense that you would cover all the different kind of seasons and have a better sense of the data. So I, if we're going to have, make it a shorter-term sunset or something like that, a year, to me, makes more sense than six months. On the rules, I'm wondering, is there an opportunity to update these with like a QR code where folks could get a translated version of the information, get access to that easily?
Yep, there is, and that's a good reminder. I know that question was posed. There is just a, kind of a simple vinyl sticker that we could put over the top of the existing signs that you see here that we have at every park facility to be able to have that virtual, that, that component so they can go on and have in different languages and, and get additional information. A lot of it too, they have the website, but then actually going to the Spokane Municipal Code too, that actually lists out in detail the, the park rules would be another benefit of that.
Okay, and then lastly, I'll just say, if, assuming this passes, I do plan to have monthly just the statistical numbers that we can report out at Public Safety each month so people can see that.
Again, and that's all I had. I don't know, Captain Hendren, if you had anything else to add here real quickly, but again, I just want to thank, oh.
I'll just ask Garrett, so will that signage, if this passes and it's emergency, will the signage be in effect the day this passes? Or what will be the timeframe this passes? How long will it take parks to get that correct information up or QR codes out in the community? Because I don't want it passed, and here it is, August, and all the parks have not been updated with the correct information.
Now, I'd say the outreach would start day one. The QR code might just lag a little bit, especially if we want to introduce additional languages.
But those signs are already up.
These signs are already up.
Yeah.
Now, and, but as far as additional, when I increase signage, that's another mechanism we use all the time in our parks, is whether it's, you know, a design open house or whatever it may be, that can happen day one when this is implemented. We can have additional signage saying, hey, the park rules, the hours and how the hours are enforced has been updated. You can go to additional information. A lot of times, we'll just put, they're like a campaign sign that we'll put on a lot of our parks as well, so yes.
I had a couple of questions for them. I sent a couple of emails, but I don't know if the rest of council saw them, about the number of citations and tickets that have been historically. I don't know if you have that off the top of your head. For the number of For the number of infractions, yeah.
I remember it was like three or four, and that was from PD, but I don't have the numbers for park rangers. Park rangers could have done something different, so.
And I did send those park ranger statistics.
I don't know if I saw them.
On, because it was Lori, Councilmember Kinnear asked me that question, so I did send additional. We did have quite a few more infractions and trespasses.
In the ballpark range?
Let me see if I can find it on my phone.
SPD, it was 2018 had two, 2019 had four, and then zero since then. So you can look, but I just think, how do we know if we pass this that it'll be a tool that's used? I guess is the concern, because we had a tool that hasn't been used.
That's because the tool isn't effective with a lot of the groups we're dealing with. And I'm just going to speak to the 27 years of doing this job. And I'll use traffic as a good example. Traffic infractions have a lot more weight than a non-traffic civil infraction. And we've been writing a lot of traffic tickets in my area, particularly on the North Indian Trail, because I've had a couple fatalities up there. I've also had two houses struck by speeding cars. I can go out there still to this day with writing tickets almost every day, and the state patrol also writing tickets, and sit there and get speeders over 15 miles an hour almost every five minutes. Infractions have, they're not highly effective, particularly with some of the groups that we're dealing with that are causing the greatest problems, causing the property damage, and more importantly, the violent crime, the partying, things of that nature. A lot of these people are very uncooperative, as I explained, because officers, particularly with the new reforms, don't have the authority to compel a detention on a non-traffic civil infraction. They're not going to engage in it because they don't have any, they don't have any authority. And without authority, they're not going to engage. So that's one of the problems with the tool. It's ineffective under the current law since the live 2021. Part of back into COVID too, let's back up to COVID, we did a lot of pulling back on certain infract, or certain enforcement, partially because it was a completely different, completely different situation with the community. We didn't write very many traffic tickets back during the initial stages of COVID. Our arrest numbers went down, a lot of things went down, other than with commercial burglary. So that's kind of an odd era to pull out of or to look at. But with the reforms, there's not, officers are not engaging in forcing non-traffic civil infractions on very, it's very rare. So that's one of the reasons why I went, after last summer, when we had three different shootings where multiple victims were struck by gunfire, or two multiple victims, and one with just one victim and one fatality, I had not even realized, because I had not been dealing with this issue, I'd been in investigations, that the park rules were no longer a misdemeanor. And so I, because I was like, well, this is an easy thing to solve. We go out there, re-educate the community that you can be arrested if you're in parks after hours, and that'll solve the problem of groups gathering. But we don't have that, the same authority as you do with a misdemeanor.
I think Councilmember Cathcart found it. He just forwarded it to me.
Yep.
So Garrett, if you didn't find it. I just got it. But so everyone else knows, it said like, it's total citations and the number of entry after hours. Would the entry after hours be the only ones that would pertain to this or all citations? Trying to understand. So it says like 2019, 78 citations, zero entry after hours.
Correct.
So the zero would be the number that would be applicable to what we're talking about?
And keep in mind too, because our shifts of our park rangers are not 24/7 in a lot of cases. Sometimes we increase patrol to a 24/7 model depending on staffing. I just go back to the model too around, as an example, and keep in mind, you know, I'm a parks guy, but, you know, speed limits. You know, if it was completely data-driven on how many speeding tickets we gave out, depending on whether we should have a 25 mile an hour, or a 35, or a 45, again, this is about to give us the opportunity, and if a year isn't acceptable, to see what type of impact it has. Even if we didn't have one misdemeanor citation, do we see a decrease in crime, in vandalism, anything that is pinged to a park's address? That is the goal that I think we're trying to achieve.
If I could actually piggyback on that, going back to the history of the ordinance pre-decriminalization, we almost never cited for it or arrested for it, or it's very rare. It wasn't needed. Most of the time, the threat of arrest was enough to gain compliance. That was the intention of most officers. We don't have, there's not capacity to fill up Spokane County Jail. The prosecutors already got plenty of work to do. Our goal is to establish the credibility of it so these people will choose other places to gather. So yes, Councilmember, I saw you raise your hand.
So to that note, or on that note, would warnings, which is I assume what it would be, would those be tracked and logged somewhere so we could get a sense of the actual activity and effort?
So on self-initiated, we can do that. We've already got the system built. We can do that. And we, as long as we code the call, we can put in there. There is a disposition when they do a warning for enforcement. So that, actually, speaking of that, that is not a problem. We do have a disposition that actually tracks warnings. So that is not a problem. We can do that.
So knowing that we may want to see all this data, we can make sure that that's part of the enforcement.
Yeah. So for data, just to clarify, the things that'll be easy, that we already have systems built up for, is anything involving an officer-initiated contact, we can pull that data, which will include the race data, as well as for any arrest data. So the only thing that we won't track as far as specific to like race data would be on a call for service, because officers are not making the choice to engage, they're just responding where there's no arrest. But if there's an arrest, that data is obviously tracked. However, we can track warnings if it's under park code violations. All we have to do is teach our officers to make sure that they change the, if, for example, if it's a suspicious person call, but it's a park rule violation, we'll have to get an instant classification in our CAD system that we can actually change it to that so we can clear the call with a warning and whatnot. But that, that is generally our goal. The problem is, is if there's not the credibility that you can be arrested, it's hard to get these people to comply, especially the ones that are causing the bulk of the problem. And like I said, that's a lot of violence. Three separate shootings with victims, and that's not the only shootings that we had.
So I hear that, but there was a shooting in Riverfront Park this weekend.
Mm-hmm.
Would this ordinance have done anything?
That, no, and I'm not, the daytime shootings are not nearly as common. Also, that shooting was not a shooting at somebody. It's still illegal. It was a firing into the air. The ones I'm talking about were actually intended violence to commit first degree assault or attempted murder, or actually murder that occurred at the parks. Not that that can't happen during the day. We've had shootings during the day. The reality though is that subject was arrested within 10 minutes, because daytime, people see it, they pointed it out, the director of officers, he was arrested within 10 minutes and taken into custody. When it happens at 3 o'clock in the morning, we spend weeks and weeks and weeks in investigation. And I can't even, I can't even calculate what that costs as far as man-hours trying to follow up on those things. Yes, sir.
But to go to Councilmember Wilkerson's point though, if people are afraid, and we're trying to address something they're afraid about, this ordinance wouldn't actually change anything about a shooting in Riverfront Park in the middle of the day.
A non-isolated shooting in the middle of the day? That occurred.
But like, all of these could be isolated. So I'm just worried.
This ordinance, the purpose of this ordinance has always been that those evening hours where we are finding, for instance, in our district, we had a fatality at one park, we had two shootings at another park, and then I'm missing one.
So Franklin Park, we had four victims, including a fatality.
Correct.
We had two different shootings that occurred at Dwight Merkel. Fortunately, only one shooting resulted in a victim. The others, nobody was struck, but there was a bunch of high school kids downrange of the rounds that were fired in both of those. And then the third shooting that we had in Northwest was at Dutch Jake where four people were struck by gunfire.
Right.
My point being though, real quick on this, this is the reason why, I think we're missing the point on this. The parks at night after hours, first of all, it's already against the law to be there. The problem is the law does not have enough impact to be able to dissuade the most violent in our community that tend to gather there. The problem with the gatherings at the parks is some of these, these people are still going to gather to party and drink and do what they do, the people that'll cause problems. But they're generally not associating with this group over here. It's random that they run into one another. But the randomness, all of a sudden, words escalate, drugs now call on board, it escalates into fistfights into gunfights. That's what we saw multiple times last year. This takes away the gathering place where we have potential rival groups to show up and gather on public, on Spokane-owned property, or just the random, we don't associate normally with one another, but now this common area allows us a chance to meet. And again, I'm not asking to change the law to make it illegal to be on the parks after 10 o'clock. That's already the law. I'm just asking to give us the sanction to where we can effectively enforce it to keep people from gathering. That's strictly what I'm asking for.
And that's what the purpose of this was. After talking to neighborhoods, if you talk to any of those folks that live around Franklin Park, it's that fear of what's going on in their parks after dark through the evening hours and giving the police the ability to do something rather than shoo them away when they don't have to leave. They don't leave.
Well, that's the problem. And with the warning, where they know that they have to be warned first, there's no disincentive to gather. They can gather. We want, we shoo them away. Well, if they go to another park, what does that mean? Do we have to warn them again that you're on park property here? And we just continue to this whack-a-mole? I don't have, I don't have the staffing to do. I barely have the staffing right now to manage the 911 calls I have coming in. In order to establish credibility on this ordinance, it's going to take overtime. That's an investment that's well worth it, because what we spent in investigations last year dwarfs the cost of what some education and enforcement emphasis will cost the taxpayer. So it's, not only that, you could go talk to every one of the neighborhood councils I've been to. I've had, I have yet to have a neighborhood council member or a person that attended come up to me and be critical of this request, because I've been very vocal from day one, taking the Northwest precinct captain position, that I wanted this change in the ordinance, because I had nine victims in my sector last summer. I don't want that again. I have yet to have any of the, any of the residents come up to me and question why we would do this. I've had a lot of support for it. And then I've had a lot of anecdotal stories around the parks. Shadle Park is another great example, where people are afraid to go and cross the park, even during the daylight hours. And part of the problem is we have people that know, they know what they can do, they will huddle, they will hang, they will spend their time. I'm not camping here, officer, I'm fine. 10 o'clock comes, they'll set up their camp in the dark, and they're there, and they're in the park all the time. And we find the needles, and we find the drug paraphernalia. And when the, when the former baseball coach at Shadle Park High School was afraid to walk to his junior varsity and freshman field because of this, that speaks to the fact that we need to get better control of our parks. But getting control of who hangs in there all night long is part of that. So, and I'll answer any more questions, but I think I beat this to death with you folks. But again, I didn't get a chance by introducing and saying, thank you all for allowing me the chance to come up here. And I do appreciate the dialogue, and I appreciate the conversation. And I know I come across very passionate sometimes. That's just the nature of who I am. I apologize. It's no offense intended. I value debate, but I'm also very passionate about my stance, so. Thank you.
I have another one.
Yeah.
But a lot of students have been coming up to me at school, and I haven't even brought it up. I'm like, how do you guys even know about this? You don't read the news, like, what's going on? And they're coming up to me, and I'm like, well, they're going to be going after bad people. And so they're asking me, well, how do you identify a bad person in the park? Because they're afraid, they're afraid for themselves that they're going to go to jail. And they're like.
Why are they in the parks after 10 o'clock?
Because they're kids, and it gets dark at 9:30 at night, and they're still hanging out in the park.
Yeah. And most of the time with situations like that, if they're the type that see the police and we educate them, and you're not supposed to be there, and they go away, and they're not continuing to gathering, there's not an issue. It's not going to be a concern. We are not looking to fill the jails full of people. I'm hoping that once it's established that the sanction is far more than a infraction, that with some people, I can't even get them to give me my name, give them, give them my name, or them give me their name. The goal is, is if they realize that I can be arrested, they don't gather here. Or if they gather, like back when I was a young cop, and I'd pull into, say, Liberty Park, and I'd see people parked there, and they'd see a patrol car, they'd leave, because they didn't want anything to do with this. One officer could clear out a park. Now, with these gatherings, I would have to send almost the entire graveyard shift. So it's, what I'm saying, we are not looking to arrest more people. We are looking to get compliance in the community. And a lot of that goes into education. And it's education, enforcement is a secondary thing.
Well, then that would go to, if it's enforcement, we haven't been doing that if we haven't been issuing civil infractions. For the record, for the public parks, just so everybody knows, and the public knows, the civil infractions from the Parks Department, 2019, 0, 2021, 2021, 4, 2022, 0, and 23, 1. So we have a tool that we're, we haven't been using, but.
The tool, I guess I'll say this one last time.
I guess I'm just afraid that the new tool also won't be effective either.
That's not, I'll go back to past where the tool was on the books. It was effective. We didn't have nearly the level of problems we have now. And this is not something unprecedented. As our email exchange, if you look around the state, even Seattle has it as a gross misdemeanor to be in the parks after hours. So I'm not asking for something that's unusual and outside the norm. Now, as far as the hours, I told everybody, you know, full transparency, my hours of concern are from 11 o'clock at night till 5:00 AM in the morning. But that is when I've had all the problems that I've talked about when it comes to the violent crime, which is what I'm trying to end. So the problem is, is I'm not going to ask my officers to go out and engage with a large group of people where they have no authority under the law to compel a detention. It's not safe for them. These people that we're dealing with that are causing the shootings, that's not everybody that's violating this, but there are, and the problem is, is our violators that are carrying guns and whatnot, they don't wear signs that say, I'm a bad guy with a gun and I may hurt you. So officers go into these situations, it's very dangerous. And when they lack authority, I put them in a very difficult situation. This is a little bit different if we did have pre-reform, but if you look at the way the, where the laws are written when it comes to use of force, an officer cannot use force to compel a detention without probable cause for a crime. Well, I don't have a crime. I have a non-traffic civil infraction where there's no criminal sanction for non-compliance. And that's the difference. Where if it's traffic, if I stop you for speeding and I ask for your driver's license and you say, I'm not going to give you that, officer, well, you've committed a new crime called failure to cooperate, and you can be arrested. And that gives the officer authority to engage. So that's, that's the difference between the two when it comes to infractions. But it's a good, it's a good question and good debate.
Well, one, I really appreciate your passion and your service and the challenge. I think we all understand the challenge. I think Councilmember Stratton and I, we had a good conversation today, and we were unified on stopping the groups of people that are really causing problems. The challenge that I think we face is that we're, we're making different assumptions on what's going to happen or not, all the people. And so I had the proposal of six months, do it my way, and we'll catch the data, and then we'll see if we really need to arrest people. Or we could essentially give a trespass order immediately or for 30 days in any other parkland and kind of see, kind of like you were saying, would be better than you have now. And Councilmember Stratton says, well, no, let's do it the other way. Six months, we'll do it, the arrest, and then we'll see the data. So that's kind of our compromise to see once and for all what the, what the data is. And I, the reason I thought six months, seven months, is if this were to pass as an emergency on the 12th, it would go into effect at the same time schools going out, it'd be over the summer, it's a lot of the concern. We'll know by the early next year, we will have had time to look at the data, and we'll kind of know. And I've said before, I, it's horrible what's happening in our bathrooms and some of our things. Those are felonies, actually. And so I'm not, I don't think those people are going to be dissuaded by a misdemeanor of being in the park after hours. And if they were seen doing that, they would be arrested. There's a lot of things, people are assuming that there might be disparate prosecution and arrest, and only certain races or certain kinds of people will get arrested, other people won't. All these things are worries either way. And so that data would help. And so the data that you described is good. So the reason I went from like being on a crusade not to do it this way was, okay, we all agree we need to get the data, and then let's, let's find out what it says. Because I, although I would love it if it turned out that there was less vandalism in the things, I, I don't think there will be, but I don't have a crystal ball. And we'll, we'll find out. But I agree with you, it's not how many people get arrested, it's what's going on. And the last little thing I'll say for the, the issue of people being concerned about safety in the parks, I agree people are, and it's horrible that that's the situation, and we all have to work on that. But for the most part, this ordinance is only for when people aren't supposed to be in the parks. And so it's, it's, it's going to be different things. So I think we all want something to change, and people are hoping that this will do it. I'm willing to kind of stand aside and see what the data says.
Can I address one thing, Council President? I appreciate, and I appreciate your comments there. Regarding the, like, the property damage and the vandalism, the one difference, though, is if an officer now, where they know somebody's in the park after hours, they have probable cause for a crime, they have authority to engage. That gives them a lot more authority and comfort under the law that if this person runs or fights with them, is uncooperative, they have the authority to be able to protect themselves and still enforce the law. So I do think that changes, that changes the dynamic when it comes to preventing people from being in there. Now, people sneaking around that we don't see, yeah, that's going to happen.
Well, that's the thing. I agree with you. I don't disagree with you. It's just that I don't think, I think when officers are going to be called to parks and see it, it's going to be a big group of people and not the...
And part of the thing, I appreciate that too, and you're right, we will do the call for service. That's why, and no offense to your proposal, your proposal almost makes my job even harder, because we're going to get those calls with the expectation, we're going to be coming and doing that, and I just don't have the staffing to do it. With the, with doing it the other way, what the intent is, is we're going to do some special enforcements, mostly based on education to start with, and we're doing this right now in North Division with some of the racing and whatnot. And we're having success in some of the areas, and they move, and we're playing whack-a-mole, and it just kind of is what it is, but it's something we've done before. But with having now that law, our intention is, if we get that law passed, is to actually have officers assigned to check parks nightly. And if they see violators, you know, individuals, we're going to go up, we're going to, we're going to contact, and we're going to see, what's your criminal history as far as, are you a property damaging person? Have you been arrested for vandalizing a park before, or vandalizing city property? Are you, you know, are you ignorant to the law? Do we need to educate you? Is, how many times have we contacted you and warned you here? You know, and if it's been three, four times, okay, now it's obviously, we're going to go ahead and have to issue a citation. So, the intent will be to be proactive. What my goal is, and I will tell you this, I came in as a Northwest precinct captain, my number one goal is I didn't want anybody shot in my parks this summer. And I know they're not my parks, but that's the way I talk. I don't want anybody shot in my parks this summer, and I don't want anybody to die on Indian Trail, like has happened multiple times in the last couple of years. So I've been focusing on those two things as my top priority. So, and so far, knock on wood, we're, we're doing well with at least one of them, so.
I think we all have the same goal.
I just want to add one thing. We did talk compromise in the six months, but after talking with Garrett, I really would like to seriously consider the year with an understanding that we would have that six-month report back with data and numbers, and then another six months.
And I can give you guys monthly reports at Public Safety. That's, that's not hard to do. And we're comfortable with the data.
And then we would share those with the diversity committee and that, so we're all on the same page and looking at if there are things that are popping up that we don't like seeing.
Absolutely.
Stuff to talk about. Councilmember Kinnear.
So, as you can imagine, pretty passionate about this, too. What if you did the year, but then at the six-month point, council would be given the option, or could take the option, of not going any further? So in other words, if the data was such that didn't need an entire year, the pilot could be ended, and you could do something permanently, is that an option for anybody? I'm, I'm offering that third rail.
I'll just turn it right back to you. I would say we should go six months with the option to extend. If the, if the evidence wasn't clear by then and we needed more, then we would accept. I'm really interested in a definitive stop unless we really see that this is working, and we as a council, I also wanted to give, there'll be several new council members, or maybe new mayor, and kind of see, give them that chance, that opening. If they still feel the same way that this council feels, then great, so.
But I would pass that back to the expert, Garrett, and who wants to really dive into the seasonal, because summer is going to be different than spring and winter.
And I initially had concerns, too, again, around that window, around the November timeframe to the, the April timeframe. I do think it's important, whether it's a six-month with a six-month renewal, or a year with a six-month check-in. To me, that's, a lot of the details, I think they're, they're similar. I do think it's important, though, that we work together on identifying what type of performance measures do we want to track? And what are those benchmark, what are those goals? I think regardless, that's, I think, day one, if we agree on that, that, that we come together and say, all right, what items do we want to track? Because again, there might be arguments, well, is it around data of how many people are getting arrested? Or is it around the perception piece? Or is it around how our parks look, or how they feel? And I think that is going to be the most important piece to this, is identifying what we are measuring, because that is going to give us that success that we need. So, I think regardless on the six months, or, again, I think just, if we have a tool, let's, let's try it. But then I think just coming together within the next week or two, to say, okay, exactly what are we going to track? And, and giving us benchmarks to see what that success is. Because your definition of success might be a little bit different than somebody else's, so having that consensus and that compromise, I think will be very important.
Councilmember Bingo.
I guess I'm sitting here pretty frustrated that we spent 30 minutes on something where, you know, I understand, you know, policy is important, you know, these are all conversations I think we could have had some other time, but it's just, parks, right now, many people we see from survey data are, are not as safe as people would like them. We have lots of violent crime that is happening in these certain times. I don't understand, I guess, what the issue is for us, you know, passing this and, and moving on, because I think we all agree that parks at a certain time of night are unsafe. And if, you know, the, the police in the parks are asking us for a certain tool to be able to, to make it easier, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the, what the holdup is here, but, yeah, I'm just kind of confused here myself.
All right. Councilmember Kinnear.
So, just to put a lid on this, what are our next steps? So, do we need another week or two? I'd rather not wait on this.
Yeah, we don't need it.
It's, to interrupt you, it's set for a vote next week, so we're going to...
We can make that.
Chat about substitution.
Okay. Because I, the reason that I delayed the Blake's fix, or I separated the Blake's fix from the parks piece, and would defer to do that until next week as well, but it's pretty confusing right now.
We'll work on it. We'll get clear. Councilmember Stratton and I made good progress today, Will. And this is a good conversation, and better to have it now before we're voting on it next week, I think, so.
I'll bring cookies for the next compromise meeting.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
And I'll just end with, you kept using the term random acts, and that just kind of like, the shooting, the shootings, was that like, we expected every weekend? You use the term random acts, and that just kind of resonated with me, because a shooting is not something that's going to, I hope not, is going to happen in a park every night. So, those random acts, and maybe some other activity, has driven us to this ordinance here that just goes across all parks throughout the city. So it just feels a little heavy-handed that the tools that could have been used or should be used, are we doing something based on random acts that have happened over the last year through COVID with vandalism? Would you say is a crime already? The shootings, you know, that's a crime, they could be arrested for that if they're found. And after the presentation about the potential new jail or community correction center today, when they are arrested on misdemeanors, it's almost a revolving door, and then those folks have more legal issues in their life that become barriers to other things. So, we can arrest them, or we can give them the misdemeanor, and they get into the system, and they're there for 72 hours, whatever the length of time is, and they're back out. And so you are back to the whack-a-mole, and you don't, we can discuss this later. But that just builds on what I heard today, is capacity to enforce, and what happens after that? Because now they're back on the streets again, these, the same group, or these same people are back in the parks, and is this going to be a big enough deterrent? For the ones who, you know, laws are for people who are innocent mostly, and it keeps them from just crossing the line. But if people want to vandalize and do some of this stuff, will this be the most effective way? And that's, that's just my concern. So I look forward to the data, and I look forward to some further conversations between now and next week.
All right. To Councilmember Bingo's point, we're over time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Remember where we are?
I do, exactly. I know exactly where we are. Emergency ordinance relating to the Spokane Municipal Court, I believe that was discussed at the Public Safety and Community Health meeting.
Yeah, I think we already briefed that.
Relating to the negotiation of illegal activities in public spaces, that was part of what we just discussed. The next emergency ordinance is relating to the Office of Police Ombudsman, I believe you discussed that at Public Safety.
Yep.
And the final one of emergency ordinance is establishing the Spokane opioid payment council. I believe that, too, was discussed at Public Safety and Community Health. Therefore, moving to resolution acknowledging the recommendation of the Neighborhood Project Advisory Committee for the West Quadrant. Again, presenting is Mr. Kevin Freebot.
Hello again. My laptop has officially died. I'm sorry, I was making sure I was next. So, this is, this was also briefed at the last Urban Experience meeting. This is just a resolution authorizing the use of up to half a million dollars of West Quadrant TIF money for the creation of permanent affordable housing. We have exactly one vendor on the list right now, and that's Habitat for Humanity. They have quite a long history of doing this, and doing it well. But this is a pilot program that hopefully, if it's successful, we can scale it up in the future. But for now, we're looking at half a million.
And I want you to know, I spent some time with this group last night. They are excited about this. This is a neighborhood who wants to see affordable housing in their neighborhood. They want to work with Habitat for Humanity.
Great.
So thank you, because this is what that TIF money is about, and it's helping get more affordable housing in this neighborhood that absolutely wants it and is willing to work together to get it. So thank you.
Absolutely. This, this is the first time the TIF has been able to fund permanent housing, affordable housing.
Yes.
Under the new, the new definitions under the state, so that's great.
Spokane led the effort to get it in place.
Did it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Freebot. First reading ordinances. Ordinance relating to the regulation of short-term rentals, and then ordinance regarding fees on short-term rentals. Our presenters are Amanda Beck, support from Spencer Gardner.
Bunch of tall people up here. So, rather than boring you with the same slides that we've looked at before, I wanted to outline the proposal that staff took to Plan Commission, just the high level, and then run through really briefly the changes that were recommended by Plan Commission and are reflected in your agenda packet. So, we have broken up short-term rentals into looking at them in residential zones and then all other zones, wherever we allow residential uses. So the proposal was to allow one short-term rental unit, and when we say unit, that can be the entire house, a bedroom, it's really up to the property owner how they list that on the platform. But one short-term rental unit in an attached, detached, or duplex, and then following kind of a natural break with the International Residential Code for multifamily units, three or more, that's limited to 20%. We keep the residential nature of the structure. That is also reflected in the requirements for non-residential zones. Slight deviation being, we're looking at a 30% for short-term rentals. Going to Plan Commission in May for the public hearing, the language noted that an accessory dwelling unit on the lot did count towards the maximum short-term rentals allowed. And then reflecting language that is in a different part of the Spokane Municipal Code, we did require or reflect owner occupancy language, which would be in the RA and RSF zones. New language to allow for grandfathering for currently active approved permits, and then just calling out the permit fees, which would be $200, slight increase from what we currently have, and then the $100 renewal. In the non-residential zones, same thing, ADUs would count towards the maximum allowed. Permit fees, and then to kind of keep the code itself consistent, staff copied noticing requirements that we currently have in the code, which applies to the residential zones, and said, we would apply that as well in non-residential zones. So if you apply, you would have to notify adjacent property owners. Recommendations coming out of Plan Commission. So, the language that they recommended to staff would amend, and is reflected in your packet, that you could have a short-term rental in a detached, attached, and an ADU. And then you could have one or both units of a duplex have a short-term rental. They directed staff to remove the requirement to keep the residential nature of the structure. Just kind of giving some context on that discussion, it's not that they want to allow people to alter the way the structure looks in a neighborhood, but that they thought it was a little bit squishy, and that if someone needed to make a change to the structure, the code or, you know, the building or fire code wouldn't allow them to do something that isn't residential in occupancy or use. Similarly, same language in the non-residential zones, so you could have an ADU, you could have a short-term rental that also has an ADU in addition to the primary, and then one or both for the duplex, also removing the residential nature requirement in the non-residential zones. They directed staff to remove language that said that that ADU counts towards the maximum, and then they also told staff, please remove the noticing requirement in the non-residential zones, particularly in downtown areas, noticing adjacent property owners can become onerous when you have like 20 adjacent property owners, not including whoever is across the street. So they felt that because those are mixed-use areas, they're high-activity zones, it shouldn't have as much of a negative impact having more transient lodging. It's a little bit small, but I have heard that there are desired substitutions, so I tried to put in the sections of the text that have been most often referenced, in case that was helpful. But are there any questions? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just mention, I do plan to bring, and I don't exactly know what it's going to look like yet, but some form of, of an incentive, an amendment that would create an incentive to convert short-term to long-term. I think it, obviously, financial would have, it'd have to be a financial incentive to do that, but trying to figure out the ins and outs of what would make sense, both from the accounting side, as well as the actual incentive to, to get it done. So, just to mention that, I'll be working on that.
Okay.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. I'm talking a lot tonight. I plan to bring forward some amendments as well. Spencer was going to help me with one of them. So, Spencer, I'll be in touch with you. I just got the, your final, Amanda, last week, so I haven't had time to go through it as thoroughly as I want, but we, I, and I know Brian probably has some changes, too. So, I will, I will have changes before next week. Thank you.
All right. And as mentioned, I have some as well, but really appreciate it, and...
All right. Moving then to, thank you, Ms. Beck and Mr. Gardner. Moving to special considerations, S1, A and B, I believe, Council President, we've addressed those.
Deferred.
Councilmember Cathcart deferred those. Moving then to hearings, H1, hearing on resolution adopting the 2024 to 2029 six-year comprehensive street program. And our presenter this afternoon is Kevin Pacano.
Pacanto.
Paco, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. I'll try to make this as brief as I can in the interest of time. Again, here to brief you on our annual update to our six-year street program for 2024 to So the request in action next week will be looking for an adoption of the program. This is a quick overview of the touches, you've seen this before, several study sessions, touches with PCTS and Plan Commission. Worth noting on May 24th, Plan Commission did make a recommendation of consistency of the update with the comp plan. Kind of a summary slide I've overshared, our, our six-year street program is our mechanism to adopt the, or enact the goals and policies of the transportation element of our comp plan. We're required every year by July 1st to have an adopted plan, that's why we go out of cycle, if you will, with, compared to the citywide capital improvement program. Before I touch on the new projects, just a summary here of the completed projects, several such as Hatch Road, Bridge, and 44th Avenue were completed in '22. The rest of the projects are under construction as we speak, or will be shortly, and should be complete this year, and thus don't need to continue forward in the 2024 version of the program. Summarizing 12 new projects, seven via grant awards. This is a listing of the projects, I'll briefly go into each of these. It's heavy on bike and pedestrian safety-oriented projects. Five of the seven grant awards are specifically for bike and ped safety type work. Overview map of the location of those projects right around town. Briefly getting into each of them, LeTah Bridge, new addition to the program. This is not grant-funded, but we need to launch into some upfront planning effort. We anticipate this will be a mega project in our world, at least $50 million, maybe up to $60 million. So we need to start with some upfront planning efforts, including dusting off kind of the old cost assets. dusting off kind of the old cost estimates and planning study that was done for this project. Next project was a result of a successful grant award, arterial pedestrian hybrid beacon installations at four locations spread throughout the city. Next project is also a successful grant award through the state's Ped Bike Safety Program. This project will install bike improvements along Maxwell Avenue, some sidewalk infills as well as some ped crossing improvements. Lincoln Street Ped Bike Safety Project, also a successful grant award from the same program, looking at bike improvements, some sidewalk improvements, bumpouts at intersections. We'll package this with some planned street maintenance work for some grind and overlay work. Again, about a $4 million project, this is on the larger end of the range for what we typically see out of the Ped Bike Safety or Safe Routes to School type programs. Next two projects are Safe Routes projects, first one at, I'm sorry, did I, yeah, skipped over one there. So Stevens Elementary, another Safe Routes to School project, about 1.4 million, has some sidewalk infill, some bumpouts, some ADA ramps. The key improvements are a ped hybrid beacon crossing admission just adjacent to the school, and an RFB installation on Napa Street east of the school. Scott Elementary, Safe Routes to School project, primarily sidewalk infill, some bumpouts and traffic calming improvements along the school walk routes, about $1 million project here. Riverside Avenue, Cedar to Monroe, this really, this project is really riding the coattails of a need for utility improvements. There's significant utility improvement needs within Riverside, primarily wastewater and stormwater. We'll add some money to that project to do a full rebuild, to get that economy to scale and that integration of our project. As is noted there, looking at 2028 construction, we're not starting planning work or design work anytime soon. It's out there towards the backend of our program. Sorry, going through these a little too quick. So Maple Walnut Grind and Overlay, this is a successful grant award through the TIB program. Grind and overlay at Maple and Walnut roughly from the freeway to the bridge, 1.5 million. Looking to do this relatively quickly in 2024. Thorpe tunnels and outgrowth are kind of continuation of the work that came out of the 195 corridor study. Take a closer look and launch into preliminary engineering to better define the scope, issues and challenges of installing some tunnels and widening those under crossings of Thorpe, of Thorpe Road. This is an impact fee funded project. Next project's also an impact fee funded project, installation of a roundabout at the Assembly Francis Nine Mile intersection. We don't anticipate moving into design and planning here immediately, this would be more in the outer years of the project, or the program, excuse me. Sorry, this has been quick on the draw. And then finally, a change from the last Spies presentation, the addition of Monroe Street Suicide Prevention Barrier Study work has been added to the program, and that's in addition since the last time I presented to you. Then a quick summary of just overview and updates, all the projects listed here, and this is more highlights, there are some other more minor changes, but all these projects will be advancing, moving forward generally faster than what was originally in the plan, say, from last year, as a result of successful grant awards. They aren't new projects, they're already in the program, but we've been able to successfully get them funded and move forward with them. Again, a heavy dose of trail and bike ped related projects. Just a map showing those locations, big picture summary, again, 12 new projects, projects coming out of the program, total roughly $20 million. New projects going in, roughly $38 million. To not skew the numbers, what's not mentioned here is the Leita Bridge, 50 to 60 million. That would throw that new value sort of out of whack, if you, if you will, so I didn't include that number in that valuation. Again, in terms of additional information, the draft of the plan has been available online for about three weeks now. You see these links if you want to dig into the details of what's in the program itself.
Do you have the Inland Empire two-way in there?
That was already added a couple of years ago.
That was in tow.
So it's already in the program.
Didn't move up in years or anything like that?
It's, we're out to an RFQ, we're on our way.
Okay.
So, yeah, hopefully beginning started this summer or fall on that.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Unrelated question, do we know when Trent is going to reopen by chance?
The bridge?
Yeah.
The Trent Bridge? I do not. It's a Washington project, I haven't, haven't heard.
Okay.
I could check into that and let you know.
Great.
There's actually a bridge there.
Excuse me?
There is a bridge there.
There is a bridge there now, that's, that's step one. When it opens, we'll have to check on that, so, yeah.
All right.
Any other questions?
Awesome work.
Great, thank you.
And the final two items, hearing H2, H3, were previously discussed earlier during the June 5 briefing discussion.
Sir motion to adopt the advanced agenda as our legislative agenda for June 12th.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Extentions? All right, it is adopted, we'll see folks at 6:00 PM. We're adjourned.